Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Inglewood's city study session tonight. We are all present except for Councilmember Barrentine at this point. We have one agenda item this evening. That is the interim city manager selection process discussion. And our Human Resources Director Maria Gonzalez is here to lead us through a couple of documents that she's put together. A few just came in this afternoon, so I asked that hard copies be put in front of you. It's also online for anyone that wants to take a look at it. So Director Maria, we were talking about first names just a few minutes ago.
Yes, let's call each other by their first name. I think it's easier. It doesn't, it just doesn't come out for me, council member and the last name.
It's a human face with the name, right?
It is.
Yeah.
I love human interaction, so.
Lead us through some of the things that you put together and some of the conversations I know you've had.
Yes, so we left it last week. I was going to contact CCMA, ICMA, or CML, and I contacted both of those gentlemen. Craig, he's the, Craig Cosien is the senior advisor with ICMA. And I also talked to Sam Mamet, who is the executive director of CML, which is the Colorado Municipal League. I talked to both of them, and in front of you, you have a guy from each one of those organizations that talks about how to hire a high-level administrative for a municipality, for a city. The one from ICMA is specific about Colorado. The one for CML is more general in nature. I know you didn't have a chance to read them, so I prepared a summary of basically what they say. It's pretty much the same points that we talk about. They are very heavy-weighted on hiring the city manager. There is a little piece on both of them about the interim manager. So both of those are about, a lot more about what to do when hiring for the position, more than how to make the decision from the interim. If we talk specifically about the interim, they said that we basically have two choices, the two choices that we pick, basically, which is either considering somebody from within or getting a name from a person that is between jobs or a person that is retired that do interim jobs as their main job now. And they said that, you know, it needs to be done swiftly by the governing body because it's very important, as we discussed last week, to keep operations going. And then it goes on, and I think we can talk about those guys. That's what I wasn't too worried about getting them today because we can talk about those steps for hiring the city manager, okay? So things that we need to discuss tonight that are very important is everything and anything that has to do with the interim managers. So we need to discuss, how do you want to go about it? And come up with a timeline so we can get interviews set up because we are on September the 17th already, so that leaves us two weeks with Eric here. So I think it would, you know, time is of the essence. Things that we need to discuss, I'll send you all the job description for the city manager, and it's nothing more than a format that, and the content came from the code. The city manager duties and responsibilities are pretty well spelled out there, so I just put it on a HR format that we use for all the employees. But I would like for us to decide if that's what we want to use as a base because it will be the base for the interim as well. Some of the competencies that we have there and the requisites should be the same. I mean, as both ICMA and CML said, it has to be somebody that is very well-versed on public administration. I had discussions with a lot of people, and there is two components to the job. It's the city and the manager, okay? The manager is the operations. I'm not to worry about that because we have very qualified people running the city, and we have taken steps for the city to keep running. That is not a major concern. I'm more worried about the city side. That's because that's the huge part that, you know, we need to keep on running. So the relationship with other municipalities, the relationship with the boards and commissions, the relationships with the citizens and with the members of the board. That's the piece that we need to address. I think we should.
Director Gonzalez, would you like us to take questions while you're, do you want to finish before these two ask, or?
No, we can start discussing. I mean, I think it would be better to go point by point. So let's talk about the job description. Did everybody had a chance?
Let's see what their questions are to begin with. I have, and so this is, you got an overview here. Mayor Protem, I think, was first.
I just, I have one question, and then I want to make one comment also. So how many people, I mean, if we get some people from ICMA, do we choose how many that we want to look at?
Yes.
And will they give us resumes or something to look at before we decide who we would like to interview?
It won't be as extensive as for the city manager, but yeah, we will have their resumes and their credentials.
Okay.
So we need to decide, how many do we want to take a look at?
Okay. And the one thing that I wanted to say is I know that there was some concern. We have gotten some emails from citizens, and I know some council members are concerned about this. We have somebody that is interim deputy city manager who is totally capable. If we don't have somebody appointed within two weeks, we will, the city will move forward because we have direction. I know we want to get on top of this, but we are not in panic mode.
Nope.
I'm saying that for the constituents.
That's great. And not only that, there's no way we could do this in two weeks. So I think probably Dorothy Hargrave probably sees the handwriting on the wall and answered last week that she'd be willing to serve in the interim to the interim.
Right, right.
Right, and she's.
So yeah, I want to assure everybody that we do have the continuity of the city at heart, and there will be no stoppages because of Eric leaving, so.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. Director Gonzalez, in your memo titled "Council Study Session" as part of the handouts for tonight, you mentioned both ICMA and CML entities could provide us with a list of the contacts and the relevant respective information for each within a short timeframe. So given what you know right at this moment, what does a short timeframe mean?
They already have names. They already compiling names for us, so we can have them in a week. I mean, I'm pretty sure we can have their names in a week.
My understanding, and I think it really depends on what we want to get from them, but I would recommend, as a starting point, a resume and a letter of recommendation from some past place, some past place that they have served or someone who knows their work. That would be a minimum. I mean, I just think that's a normal kind of thing.
Starting point.
Just a very, yeah. And I think actually that because they know, I think they've already, I don't know for sure if they've talked or not, but Craig seemed to act, even when I called him, to find out how they go about this. He said, oh, I can think of three or four people right now, and I can think of someone else. And he said, it just depends if you want us to do this or not. So he is now back in the country but not able to be here tonight because he has a major event going on with an 84-year-old, 84-year-old friend who's had a, who has a big party tonight, so that's why. He would have come otherwise. So I think it can be fairly quick.
Thank you. And then may I ask another question?
Yeah.
Under the section titled "Interim Management," I think it's top of page four.
Yep.
In the ICMA document, there's one line here that we briefly discussed last week when we met that I just want to remind us to keep in front of mind, if you will. It says, "First and foremost, local government officials must avoid acting impulsively and succumbing to the temptation to hurriedly appoint an administrator as a quick fix to the problems of vacancy, recruitment, and selection. We do need an interim period to consider carefully the criteria we're seeking in our new administrator." So I understand in this case, we have, we're soon to have no manager and no deputy, and so it is wonderful that we have a director who's been with the city and knows. I still just want to cautious as to making a hairy decision that creates greater problems, incremental problems later.
I put together a, oh, sorry, you have.
Yeah. Great, anything else?
I do have other things, but maybe not, I'll wait.
Yeah. Councilmember Sierra.
So I guess I just have questions in terms of the process or at least the timeline. So how long are we expecting the interim process?
Great question because that's exactly what I was going to say.
Maybe let's let her go for a while, and she's been thinking about this. I have not talked to her about it, but she said she's got a number of ideas she'll put out there for us, and then we can talk about what we think about those, okay?
So for the interim, we make the discussion about if we want to consider the directors or just the names that the ICMA and CML will give us. That's a discussion that we have to have. But let me walk you through some sort of timeline. We will have to establish a contract with that person, and I will engage, you know, the city attorney to work on that contract for the interim. And I was thinking it can be a contract for six months. Now, let me run you through those six months, okay? I'm giving us, the whole group, 45 days to work on the job description, to work on what is it that we want from that person, to be ready and have a posting, like they call it in the guides, ready to go, okay? So we'll give ourselves 45 days or less, I mean, if we get done sooner, great, to work on.
Excuse me for a second. Are you talking about 45 days to reconsider the interim manager position or that you're talking, yeah.
No, I'm talking.
So could you start back a bit for the interim and what you think the timeline would be for that, as well as then the piece that's parallel for the manager? Because I think that's what we're also really concerned about.
For the interim, okay? I'm pretty sure we can have, I would venture to say at least five names with their resume by Friday, okay? Because I know they already have people that they have considered. I haven't engaged any names until we get the decision on what is it that we want to do. So I can pass those along, and we can interview, that will be up to you, what is your availability, and how do we want to do those interviews, okay? I think for the interim, we can do an hour, which is each one of them, and you need to tell me how many do you need, and we can space them out according to your availability. So that will depend on what time do you have available to do that. And as I was saying, I mean, the first thing that we need to get done is that job description. We need to know exactly, and we need to be all in agreement, what is it that we're looking for. Because, yeah, it's true, it's an interim, and we're going to get people that know how to do the job, and it's recommended by ICMA and CML, but we still want to know what is it that we want from that person, okay? So that's very important, to get your comments in on the job description. Once we do the selection, it won't take us more than a week to get that person on place because these are people that are ready, ready to go and are local. Those are the people that they're recommending, so they will be ready to go on a, they will turn on a dime, as the expression said. So depending on your availability, we can have it on within 30 days.
It seems to me like what we're talking about is gathering resumes, and we have to determine also with those two from internal that are interested in it. Have everyone's resumes in track, and we probably could have them all by Monday into our, I mean, by Friday and into our files by Monday to possibly take a, maybe we'd have to have a special session next week to look them over and decide who out of those, whether there are maybe four to six, we want to call in for an interview, possibly interview them the week after that, and make a decision that week. We could maybe have two different nights, each maybe an hour and a half interview or some time in between, and we could hire by the third or fourth week is a possibility. Is that, it sounds like a month.
We should have somebody in place. It is very doable to have somebody in place within 30 days, okay, following this process.
So, and then within that, we need to, there are some questions, I believe, in one of these. We also have questions from the past. We need to pick some interview questions that we all feel comfortable with, maybe a base of four to, three to four, we all say we definitely are, and then what else do you want to add in that we think might be useful?
I will send you a list of questions that are behavioral questions to ask, and you can pick, I mean, if we said four each, you can pick four questions each and ask the questions that you are more comfortable with asking. I mean, that will be totally doable.
Does that process for this first part of the interim make sense to everyone? Does it seem like it's doable, traveling in the next several weeks where that might not work?
I'm going to ask a question. Do you want to have all seven members in every single interview, or you want to divide and conquer? Because that, that is a decision that you have to make.
I think we all need to be in all of them. That's my, I can't see any way around that.
Okay.
I agree.
So I need to get you, I can schedule the interviews, that's not a problem, as I said. I can get resumes by Friday. I will send them, and then we can talk about on a Monday, who do we want to bring for an interview? Do we want to pick, we can see how many names we have and pick three or four, and I will schedule and get your availability.
It might be good for us to do a doodle calendar thing for a number of evenings out, and maybe even if anyone knows there's a certain day that they could take time, that we might be able to do a couple daytime. But I know work schedules are all different, so don't want to put that on anybody. I think Councilmember Wink first.
Thank you, Mayor.
And welcome, Councilmember Barrentine.
So if we get the resumes from the two internal and the others by Friday, are we excluding recommendation letters then, a reference?
Yeah, I don't, maybe we do references along the way.
Is it the totality? Yeah, in order to not hold up the process.
That would, that's a great question. I think that, I mean, in other settings, I've done the resume first picked from them and then a letter of resume, or recommendation comes in as you're doing that. That's another way to do it.
Yeah, we can have the letters coming when we do the interview, so we will give you more time.
Councilmember Martinez?
I think that makes sense, and I was wondering if we should just maybe look at our calendars next week right now and see what days might work for a special meeting? If we know we're going to get the resumes in by the end of the week, maybe we set some time next week now.
We could do that. Are there any other items before we do that?
I'm under the point of information, and this is terrific, I'm glad to hear that we're able to get at it so quickly. So looking into next week, how long is an interview typically scheduled to run?
Again, for the interim, I would say an hour. I think it's plenty. So if we pick four, that will be four hours that we need to schedule for the council to interview. And then we need to discuss them, we can discuss them as we go, we can discuss them at the end, whatever the preference is for the council, we can do either or. So we can do the four interviews and then, you know, discuss and make a selection, or we can discuss each candidate after they do, they do their interviews. So if we do each candidate, I mean, 15 minutes is more than plenty after an hour of interview, so we can do an hour and 15 minutes four times. Or we can have four interviews and then have a half an hour or 45 minutes to bake the discussion among all the candidates. I mean, that will be what is your preference.
It could be that we have two in one night, and we discuss both of those and move on to the next two. And we probably need to look at our schedules. I think the schedules are going to be the tricky part for all of us.
So if we do two and two, I would recommend that we do 15 minutes or 10 minutes after each interview, and we all get on the same page, and we put the notes, because that way we have it right there for when we make the decision. So we can do, you know, two and a half hours one night and two and a half hours another night on your availability.
And I think having a clear list of what the criteria are that we're looking at and how we would each sort of rate them on that and comments would be really helpful. So that'll come out of what we think the job description really entails in this interim time.
I will send you a list of questions from that job description and how to rate those questions. I will send you that material this week. As soon as I have it ready, I'll send it to you.
So are you ready to talk about dates next week? Yep. Okay. So, starting with Monday, pardon?
I was going to say, do we have study session items on Monday? Or can we use that time?
The 24th, we set aside to be a possible budget review if we needed some, right? Wasn't that?
I was just looking at that, and there are, hang on just a second.
We can always move things.
Right. There is a budget update. There also was.
There are a few things pending, I think.
There were like four things, but I think the police building update, but I think that's something that we decided we could move that.
Yeah, we pushed that off, yeah.
The police building redevelopment program update and.
She may actually have the actual what's on right now. Can you look at it?
We have two items right now going.
Okay, so what are the two we have going?
The 2018 August Annual Report and the Inglewood Redevelopment Action Plan Overview. That's what I have right now. We might possibly have one more item, but right now we're saving them.
So the next, the next meeting shouldn't take that long because we're going to have the resumes ahead of time, and we just have to decide, okay, out of all the applicants that we have, what four do we want to interview? So it shouldn't be a problem that you already have items on that agenda. It wouldn't take that long. I mean, it's not going to be long.
How about if we do this? We'll plan that that will be the first thing on our agenda, and that's our big goal for that, the 24th. And then if the other two items, if we have to kick one off, we'll do that. But Mayor Protem and I will meet tomorrow to go over what the items are. There were, there were four at one time, and then it looked like we could have nothing if we wanted to.
Right, and we talked about clearing it if we could because of the interview process.
So it is feasible and flexible. Councilmember President?
If I'm getting ahead, please let me know. So it's definitely four that we're going with? Or is that just the tentative?
No, that hasn't been decided. I was using four just.
And then secondly, we, again, we, you guys may have a system from last time. We'll discuss how we advance or how we decide who, whatever quantity we pick moves on?
Yeah, and I think we have to decide what those criteria are, and hopefully we can get a little of that done tonight based on this job description from the regular so that we decide what from that job description makes sense for the interim. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Because I can't go into that either without some idea of what I'm deciding here.
Can you tell me two nights that you can do, like two and a half hours at least?
Let's plan on the 24th for figuring out who we're choosing, and then, yeah. So what are people's days after that?
I think I can do any evening next week.
I'm here for BAC on Tuesday.
I know that Tuesday's out. I am speaking.
No, we need to look at the following week.
The following week.
Because we need to give them a week to come. I mean, we cannot decide on Monday.
Right. That's what I thought.
It might, but I cannot guarantee that it will work.
So the week of October 1st through the 5th is what we're looking at.
So that would be a council meeting we have that night?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excuse me.
So it's the second, okay?
So we, I, yeah. I'm open on the second. I'm open on the third.
There's a, isn't there a Dr. Coe?
It's an executive meeting.
Okay. Okay, good.
Which I don't need to go to.
I'm out that Thursday, but good any other days of the week.
I can do Tuesday or Friday.
I could do Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday.
Friday is your, Friday during the day? Friday is the.
Yeah.
So it looks like the second or the third.
The Housing Authority is on the third.
Culture Arts Commission's on the third also.
Well, I would think that this would supersede those two if we.
What time does, the Housing Authority would be over by six.
That's over by six.
It should be over by six. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear both of you. Okay, sorry. No, what were you saying, Councilmember? It should be over by 6 o'clock. Okay. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't generally, but just in case it did.
What time does Housing Authority usually meet, at 5?
I think it's at 4.
Is that at 4 now? Okay.
I think it's been at 4 for a long time.
Well, I was surprised if it goes till beyond 6, then.
Jim, unless they.
It's gotten close, but, yeah, all right.
Great, okay, so we have the second and the third open. Can everybody block that and save from 6 to 9 both nights? With lunches at 5:30 if people need them, I guess.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Start at 9:30.
That will work. I will send you resumes.
6 to 9:30, do you think, might be a little bit more, that would be two candidates either on the panel, maybe.
Okay, so let's talk about the candidates. I will engage ICMA and CML tonight. When we finish, I will send them the emails and start collecting the information. Do we want to, the two directors that apply get you their resumes as well for that meeting on the 24th? Do you want to take a look at them, or you want to discuss now, or how do you want to address that? Do you want to include the directors on it, or do you want to do only ICMA, CML resumes?
Councilmember Wink?
So might we get into any personnel-type discussion that we should keep a little more reserved if we elevate the two internal candidates into the discussion at this point? You know what I mean?
I'm a little uncomfortable deciding one way or the other on the two that have come in until they apply and give us, which now makes me think of something about, we aren't asking for a recommendation letter, but a cover letter might be really good to ask them. So they send us their resume in a cover letter of intent. Why do they want to do this? I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else.
I agree.
That way we hear from those two directors and why they also want to do it as opposed to others who have done the job before and that we assume are going to be those that are going to be in this list from ICMA.
Perfect.
I think that gives them the best and fairest opportunity. I don't want to shut anybody out.
I will contact them in the morning and make sure they have their stuff ready for Friday, so I can send them.
Is everybody okay with that idea?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So let's, and again, that means, as I said, the idea, let's talk about the criteria and the job description. As I said, I think six months is plenty, so we're looking at somebody that will be the interim for six months, that will, with the contract. And again, the city attorney will drive that piece of the selection process, he will write the contract. And my.
I have a question about that. If we, if we found someone earlier that could come earlier, like I don't, I mean, sometimes people are doing them in four months. Is it then that we wait two months for the interim or to finish out, or how does that work?
No, we'll write the contract in a way that lets them know that the anticipated time is six months, but.
Thank you.
That the anticipated time is six months, but it may be less or more, and that's how they're used to serving.
That's better than having a three-month contract renewable for another three, and that makes it more, yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
So yeah, my timeline, as I said, is like 45 days to get the posting out there, and then we need to give them 60 days. That's also on the guides. That's also what they recommend. For a high-profile position like this, you give people enough time to get together, whatever material we ask them for the interviews. Then we leave 30 days for interviews, and again, we will pick four candidates, and we will have 30 days to make those interviews. And one point that the council have made very clear is that you want to spend more than an hour with them, so.
Okay, now you're on to the total city manager hire now.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the timeline.
Right, right.
So we have 30 days for interviews, and then we have 15 days to do the offer and the negotiation, and then we have to give that person 30 days to move in the city if it's somebody that is no local, okay? That's why I said six months because that's exactly what the timeline suggests. And as I said, the city attorney will write the contract in a way that if we get somebody earlier, we can, we can just move with a new person, okay? So that will be the first criteria, somebody that is willing to work for the city for six months. The second big question that I have is, do we let that person apply for the, be a candidate for the job as well, or not?
Councilmember Wink?
I think absolutely. And some argue that that person then has, thank you, Mayor, has an unfair advantage perhaps, and perhaps that's the case, but everyone we need in the term, and I think that all candidates for the permanent position should be evaluated.
Yes.
At once, so we don't exclude anyone. Sure, someone, but the person who has the interim role, if that person does apply, could even be at a disadvantage, maybe they perform poorly, but, you know, it's not necessarily.
It's not necessarily, and I will agree with Councilmember Wink. I think letting the interim apply is the best practice. As I said last week, you know, when you have a temp, you have the ability to see how that person worked already, so you have the best interview possible. So that would be my recommendation as well.
Councilmember Barrentine?
But we're not requiring that the interim apply, correct?
No. You mean to the full-time permanent?
Unless there's other jobs that are available in the city, they could apply to that. But as part of picking the interim, we're not requiring that they apply for the, correct?
No, it's not a request. It's, we are allowing them.
So I guess that's.
Yeah.
That answers my question. Correct, we're not making that as a requirement.
No, right.
So, but if, if they are interested, it's not a, it's not something that they, so we'll also find that out during the interview. Okay.
It doesn't preclude them from applying to the city manager job. The reason why I asked the question is because the process for the inner, for applying for the interim position will probably look quite different than the city manager position with a lot more documents required. So I was thinking application, not.
Well, that's a given, yeah. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah. So the next point will be, talk about the job description. Okay? Because we need to decide what the criteria is. Those were the two biggest that I have, but now we need to go in detail. What do we want from the interim, and what do we want for the city manager? I think they are very similar. I don't see why they should be different. Just because the, the job is for six months shouldn't, we shouldn't lower, lower our standards for the city. So everybody has a copy of the job description. And as I said, it's basically a summary of what the code says, just put in the, you know, City of Englewood job description format.
Is this also in line with the charter?
Yes, that's the code, the charter. Yes, I'm sorry. I called it the code, sorry.
You said that earlier, but it's good to confirm that.
Yes, it is in line with what is established in the charter, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did take a look, or a few different views into the current city manager position description and made several notes. Thank you for sharing, Director Gonzalez, that you sort of took it from charter and it sort of covered the, the A to Z in terms of what the position needs. I see, I think it's almost there. I do see an opportunity to maybe modernize it a little bit, maybe get a little bit more specificity, especially now based upon the descriptions that are in this, which I didn't got later.
Yep.
I read through it, but not to the level of detail. I read through the actual one. So several of the areas under, for example, the skill section have some redundancy in what, what they're describing and redundancy, and then a lack of sort of specificities. For, for example, knowledge might mention something that's mentioned under mathematics and under analytics, but no specific, specific skill is mentioned under skill. It's just sort of the same kind of mashed potatoes instead of meat and a whole potato, maybe. So more direct, just more specificity. And so maybe you all don't want to spend that much time on it. I don't think there's much, like a ton of work to do, but I would like to see it be brought up to speed, as we've had many discussions about our documentation that exists and keeping, keeping up to date with language and requirements. So I think this is a good opportunity to do that for the city manager position. And we have good, good.
Yeah.
That's now. And if Mayor, Mayor Protem, if you want a member of council, if you want to sit down in a small group and sort of work through it quickly so that we can bring it back to council, I'm happy to help because I have tremendous experience doing this. So I'm offering that if you want.
That's great. Thank you. So I have a question of clarity for all of us for a minute. This is, this is language that's probably pulled from the charter too. So a question maybe for the city attorney is, when we tweak this, what are we getting into legally? Because this, this is redundant to me in a number of ways. And even some of it, I'm not even sure what, what some of it might mean. But I realize we've got to stay within the charter. So how does that work?
The charter is pretty broad in what the requirements are. So I would like to suggest that you just dive into it. And then if at any point I'm concerned about a legal issue, I'll bring it to your attention at that time. And that, that gives you the, the broader scope to just move forward and do what you guys want to do.
Okay, great. Thank you. So in the short term of hiring an interim, I don't have trouble using this, although we might need to, like, clean up some of the language. What I found, and I'd love to hear your views, is that, in my view, the leadership supervisory piece, I rate it as a big number one, executive level management as a number two, and administrative and operational management duties as a three, sort of in progression of what we really need them to be able to do on the high level, and down to staff management and development duties. I can't imagine in six months, although there could be personnel issues that they will have to deal with, that we're not asking them to do a whole bunch of reviews and stuff where they have not been here to be able to do that in the interim capacity. So I just want to make sure we're not asking the person to do something that's really not expected in the next four months or, so. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I too made note of that section. All the headers under that section, they just seemed broad and a little unfounded in places. And I, I think it would be, it would be good to sit down and really think about what we're asking for and what we want. And we can define them more narrowly. I think if we do that, maybe even in an hour with good concentration, maybe then, by then, the list will, well, actually, that's not true. Okay, so I, I'm not pleased with that, that list of headers under that section. And then secondly, more pointedly to your, your comment, I, I'm afraid to modify the, the city manager position description because then, I mean, if, an interim manager is an interim manager, correct? So if a city manager, a permanent city manager duty arises, then the interim manager doesn't do that, then who does it? And I think they have to do the job, but.
So there, there are, there are big, big, big decisions that we can make. And I would like to suggest to follow your idea. Sit down in a smaller group for an hour, you know, three people, and just clear the language. But there are, there are things that we need, that are broader in nature. Do we want to, like it says here, 10 years of experience? Can, are we going to use that criteria for the interim, or are we going to shorten the period? I believe, like you said, I mean, the, the job description should be the job description, whether it's an interim or not. But again, that's a decision for the council. It's not my decision to make. So that's.
So that's what we need to get at for now, is the interim, are there any changes we would make in this, given the, for an interim? Is 10 years okay? Do you want 20? Do you want, and I know Councilmember Quest has looked through it because he has some ideas.
Sure. I mean, to that specific one, that to me would be a change in qualification as opposed to a change in expected duty or role. And so I'd be more willing to make compromises there if we felt that, that was needed. And I'm not sure what kind of idea they've given you. If we have a 10-year requirement just with the specific qualification, does that limit how many folks that we receive back? If it's, if 10 years means we get two candidates as opposed to five years getting us more, I'd be more likely to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue because we're talking about people that retired from the job. So they will have the experience. I mean, when we talk about the ICMA candidates or the, the CML candidates, we're talking about, most of them are retired from the job. So that shouldn't be an issue.
And I guess, to the point that you guys have made, I, I find this pretty broad. In some cases, vague, almost, you know? If I'm the city manager and I read this, I don't think this is going to tell me what I need to do every day, day in, day out. And that leads to my question a little further down the road. Who trains this person? You know, we, we don't have that manager, that assistant manager role right now. Who will be in charge of making sure this person is, is functioning well and just, you know, just.
And that's, that's, that's exactly what we have. 10 years of experience. They will have the training already on what a city manager does. And that's why we have an acting deputy city manager that will give them the details of the operations. And we have the directors that will give them, I mean, a, a city manager or, or an interim city manager shouldn't be an expert on any of the areas. They should be an expert on managing all the areas well. And that's what we, we cannot lose sight of. That, that's what we ask for 10 years of experience. That's the training that they have. And many of the people that, I was talking to, to Craig this morning, many of the people that they would suggest is people that have maybe, maybe two or three cities even experience. So it will be a very broad perspective, and, and we will enrich the city by, by bringing that type of talent.
It's a good question that you're asking though, because ultimately, we are their boss. And so we are going to have to work together to help them become successful for that interim period as well as when, so one of the things that we did when we hired city manager Keck was to come up with some priorities of what we wanted him to do within the first 60 to 90 days, and then some hotspots. One of them was the fire department. And they knew that those were the thing, he knew that those were some of the things. And he came up with those first 30 to 60 days, things he knew he wanted to do after just being here a bit, which, you know, we got to give the person some time to, but the interim, in the meantime, we're not probably asking them to change anything. So we want them to help the city function and do well, and to operate, if there is an emergency, to operate well as, you know, too. So, yeah, those are good, those are good questions. I mean, we, we get to be a part of that, bringing them on. It's not an easy process. And that's, we're going to have to work together.
Thank you. Thank you.
So are we okay with the 10 years of experience and a master's degree? Those are two very broad, easy to decide. And then I would suggest that we sit down in a smaller group. We can come up with a group tonight and make an appointment and work on the language.
Well, let's ask first, is everybody comfortable having a smaller group come up with at first? Because we don't want to assume just because somebody suggested. So I'm really thankful that someone's willing to help. Or anybody else want to be a part of that? Or do you want all of us to be a part of it? Councilmember Martinez?
I'm fine with the smaller group. I don't feel like I need to be a part of it. Obviously, if there's big changes, it would be good to know, you know, how those decisions arrived at. But I'm fine with the small group and not being a part of that small group.
We, we would definitely bring it back. It would be simply producing a draft one that then you all, we all react to. And then it's just, this would be decided by the full group as to whether we agree to the final, any final. I imagine it'd be several drafts. Councilmember Barrentine?
I, I think, I agree with Councilmember Martinez. I think a small group is fine. If, it's for such a short period of time, by the time they walk in the door, it'll be over. And so as long as that's kept in mind so that they, you know, exactly, we're not trying to overreach with what we're expecting them to do in six months is, they'll, they'll be able to find where the bathrooms are and make sure that people have some cohesiveness and leadership. But it's a very short period of time. So I'm, I'm good with a small, short, small group, sorry, for the short period of time. And, and then have, and have them bring back any changes, like you, like you said. I mean, any changes that they're going to make that would be significant to this, or issues that they, that group feels is, you know, come to light in their discussions that would be important to bring to us. I think that that's the most important thing. So then we can discuss those.
Councilmember Quest?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with the small group as well. And I imagine it was presented facetiously. But I am expecting more than directions to the bathroom for our new interim.
Well, I mean, there's a certain piece of that, learning everybody's name and that. I think they're going to come up with some important things, though.
I just want to make a clarification. I mean, we're going to do the job description for the city manager. It will be applied for both, the interim and the city manager. I mean, there will be no two job descriptions. It will be, it will be one document for everybody.
That's what I thought we were talking about.
Just want to clarify that point.
Councilmember Wink, that's what you were volunteering to do, right? Is to, is to really get down to the nitty on the long-term of the position and bring back, because tonight, we're going to basically use this. And if, are we okay with the 10-year thing as being? That's what I thought was being suggested. I'm trying to get, okay, Councilmember Barrentine, maybe it changes it for you?
Yeah, it, it does. I think that we should do two. I think that it should be revisited after the interim is in there and kind of revamp that so that when we put that document out there, that we have that. I don't, I don't think that a small group should come up. But we're all the bosses, and I think we should all participate in that process on a bigger scale. I'm a little concerned about that, but whatever y'all decide.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, it would be only making some suggested modifications in draft form that would be brought to the whole council to agree on or not agree on. And then, so absolutely no decision-making, just suggestions, but more quickly derived.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Then it doesn't change.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Quest?
I still agree with.
Oh, keep going. Did you have more? Sorry.
I did, but now I've forgotten.
I'm sorry.
I would still like to go the route of one application for both candidates. I don't want to water down one job description for one of the roles and, and then have a more advanced one for the full-time. Thank you.
Would you repeat that again? I think I might have missed it.
You bet. Yes, sir. Yes, I will. I, I think that, I, I still prefer one job description for both roles, interim and full-time. I don't want to water down one for the interim and think that this is a lesser role, will be for potentially shorter period of time if that person could end up being permanent. So I do like the approach of one, one job description for both roles. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. It seems that the discussion, although we're, we seem to be all in agreement, is hinging on a little bit of time. So let's say we do have this meeting of three individuals. I'm envisioning this week?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I mean, I think we can get it done rather quickly.
Yeah, I was thinking tomorrow or Wednesday.
That's.
I've blocked Friday for it, so, but I can maybe squeeze Wednesday, and I've got.
So in that instance, if there were some feeling of caution toward that choice, having this more ready to prepare or to share, I think, might alleviate some of that. Do you know what I mean?
Um, yeah, I do. I mean, everybody can chime in here. I'm, I'm a little bit, I guess I'm not so worried about this for the interim, as long as we agree on what the qualifications are, as a way to get us going on the interim. Then I would like to spend a little bit more time on what it is we're looking for in the next full-time permanent city manager. And I would even like to ask manager Keck if he would look this over. I know at different points, he has said that this is not, when he, when we were doing his review, that this is not a very useful document. There are many other things he would want to be reviewed on that are not necessarily fully clearly articulated here. So I'd love to hear what some of those are. And that might take a little bit more time. I don't want to hold our interim hiring up for that. And I, it's not that I don't think this is a great document to get an interim. I think we can do just fine with it. I'm just worried that we're going to hold off on that part when we want to get things kind of settled and spend time on what the next stage is. And maybe there are some major content areas that we want to change here. But I, I don't know. We've never looked at it the whole eight years, nine years I've been on. I, I offer that as another alternative way to look at it. So I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How, how quickly is this group looking at meeting and how?
By Friday, we were saying?
Yeah. Perhaps manager Keck could even participate by then and then just keep moving it forward.
Yes, I think that.
How soon do you think you'd have a product out of that meeting that can be brought to council?
I anticipate after the hour, in the way I'm thinking of working through the edit.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So if I can offer some, I mean, the job description is not a detailed description of what that person is going to do day after day after day. The job description is what's going to come, we're going to get the job description, and we're going to come up with what they call the posting. So this is some, again, when we said you have to have 10 years of management, you don't have to spell out, you have to have this department and that department, and how many people, and that's, that's things that people assume when they read the job description. So what this group is going to be doing is working on the language more than, and then if the council wants to add things that are not here because they are not in the charter, we can add them to the job description. So this group is not to come up with the NASA manual of how to do the, the, the city manager job. It's just a job description. And by definition, they are very brief documents that help people to get an idea what we're looking for.
True.
So, and, and just to ease everybody's mind, Eric Arori looked over this document, and he agreed, yeah, this document has been reviewed by Eric before I sent it to you. So he agreed that that, that was a, it was pretty close to what the, the, the code, the charter says about the city manager. So, and, and again, I, I don't think Allison has reviewed the job description, but I will, I will be very comfortable sending it to her and making sure, you know, it's, it's compatible to the, to the code.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. And I think that in some things, it needs to be general because we just need to have things that we know that we want specifically done. But it needs to be general because each person that applies will have different personalities. And so we need to have it general enough that they can operate within it also. But then we need to determine things that are the most important to us, that we need to make sure they have those qualifications.
So if I can offer a suggestion, let's, let's meet by Friday. Let's work on the language. Let's get a document out there. We'll send it to everybody. And if you think there is something major that you think is missing, we can add it to the, to the document and discuss it among the whole group.
I think that makes sense. And if we, if we discover in a month, like, oh my goodness, we got to really redo something, we can always do that too. So we're not bound by anything. It's, yeah. I do have a question. This, this date effective on here says September 2018, and then date reviewed, September 2019. What does that mean?
We can review it and not make it effective for, on the future.
Is this the year, this is the full year that it's, this description is effective? Is that what that means? I just was really thrown off by date reviewed.
I, I reviewed on September, oh, sorry. It should say, no, it should say, sorry. It should say 18. That's a typo.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I reviewed on September 18, and it will be effective whenever we decide that date.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so we, we know which one is the one that is current, because I also keep the old ones on file. So that's why it has two dates in there. Sorry, that's, that's a typo. It should say 18, no 19. 18, no 19, yeah.
Okay, sounds great. Any other comments or concerns about where we're headed on this? Seeing none means you're all in agreement, right? Everything looks like we're moving ahead?
Yeah.
What else do you need from us?
So I would like to address some of the questions that the council asked the last time. I did, I did verify with both of the organizations, there will be no charge. Since they don't provide a service, they will provide us with names, we have to do all the work. So I do, but I did verify with both of them, and, and they will offer their advice. It's included in, in our membership. That's what they say. Okay? So there will be no additional fee for that. Again, both organizations are going to give us potential candidates, and we will have to come up with a way that we're going to decide who, who the candidate will be. and we will have to come up with a way that we're going to decide who, who the candidate will be. They, again, they will recommend people that they have confidence they can do the job, okay? They won't just pop up names of people that come to them. Actually, Mr. Cosian said that they will meet, the group of them will meet and they will, you know, go over the job description, for example, and say, no, this person is not good for this job for whatever reason it is, okay? So they both assure me that they will recommend candidates that are suitable for the job of being the interim city manager for the city of Englewood. They will provide their resumes and their references to council for consideration. So yes, they will provide us with their, their background information and a list of cities that they have served and recommendations and things like that. We will have to come up with the criteria, as we said. There is a couple of very good checklists on, on one of the guides that we have there or things that we should look for. And they, they will both provide names and contact information within the very short time. As I said, we can have the names by Friday. I'm pretty sure we can have a good list of people by Friday. Those were the questions that you asked me last week. So I wanted to address those specifically.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Perhaps I'm forgetting a little something. Did I not ask, or maybe we put it to rest before the meeting ended? Did I ask, ask for maybe a comparative chart of some sort with time and costs for the, that bulleted list of six? Or maybe, did we decide in the end not?
We decided at the end, we were just going to go with this format anyway.
Go with five and six and just do this?
Yeah, yeah.
Those are all the points that we have for tonight, so.
Great. I have one more thing related to this that I, just in terms of communicating with one another and also with the city employees. I just think these kinds of times when you have a major shift in top leadership and when it's, it's appeared to be somewhat contentious over time for someone, although we know that Manager Keck has found a great place, that I really want to make sure we communicate with the employees well. So could we come up with a communication plan and then also agree? I mean, we're just continuing to use, you know, our, our management system for documents that we all log into. And anything that I get, I would send to her or anyone else to send out to all of you. And if you have something too that you found, if you can do the same. But I just want to make sure, particularly with employees, that we not lose some of our top talent, that they know we're really moving forward, that we believe in them, know that they're doing great work. So how, what's the best way to keep communicating in this interim?
The thing that worked the best for the employees is an all-employee email. That's the way we can reach everybody. So it will be good for the council to put together some communication for the employees and tell them, you know, we are working on this. We have the best interests of the city at heart. And we are, we are considering every single candidate that will be good for the city of Englewood. So I think it will be good for, for you guys to come up with, with some communication. That is an amazing idea.
How often does that go out? Every week or something?
We can, no, we can send it anytime. I mean, we should, I will come up with a communication. When we started the, the process, we need to communicate with employees, but we also need to communicate with the candidates, okay? We cannot forget that piece. And those are different. But yeah, it would be a great idea for the council to send a memo to all the employees. I mean, it doesn't have to be a memo, you know, some, some sort, like, like the email that you sent telling them that, yeah, Eric is leaving, but we have, you know, the, the operations are going to keep continuing. And we are looking for an interim already. We have a process. We're looking for candidates already. And we also discussing how to hire the manager that will come. I mean, letting them know what, what you guys are doing to ensure that the city continues its operations and, you know, it's not going by the sideways or it's going to stop or anything like that. That is very important for employees. And it's also very important for citizens.
Yes.
I think that I, it would be my recommendation that you also come up with communication for the citizens. Tell them then, besides, you know, the people that look at the website and see the meetings, but ensure people that, you know, services are going to continue even if we go over when Eric leaves, okay? I think it's very important that you guys assure the citizens that we already have things in place, that we're looking for an interim. I think it's important for both.
Councilmember Sierra?
I'm probably getting ahead of myself here, but I think it just says clarification. So Director Hargrove currently is our interim deputy city manager, correct?
Acting deputy city manager.
Acting. So we do have the open deputy city manager position open. So I'm guessing that we pull back that posting at the moment because we probably don't want to hire a deputy city manager until a full-time city manager is in place.
Yes. Agree with you. That's a decision that, you know, the city manager will have to make. I would prefer that whoever we hire as a city manager will be part of that decision.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quest?
We seem to be stating with a pretty high degree of certainty, we're not going to have an intern, an interim manager in place by 10:3. So in that communication we make to city and staff, it might not hurt to even introduce Acting Deputy City Manager Hargrove now. And I'm, I'm very thrilled too that she'll be stepping into that role for as long as she needs to. And so just so that I can go through the timeline correctly, you folks are kind enough to get together. Good evening. So that I'm going through this correctly, you folks are kind enough to meet by Friday. You're going to boil down that list. That will go out to all of council over the weekend or we'll receive it Monday during our normal meeting?
I hope we can get a draft to you by, by Friday afternoon.
Okay. And you're, you're expecting the names back by Friday afternoon as well? And then we will be provided those resumes on that same day?
Yes.
For review for the following Monday when we would have interviews? So do we need to select how many people we are going to? Or do we need to decide how many people we're going to interview now? Because how will we notify them when the interviews come in of how many we'll intend to see?
Let me clarify the times. So we will meet on the 24th.
Sure, okay.
To discuss the candidates, okay? That's, so you will have the resumes and we, okay, we got 15. Oh, wow. How many do we want? We like five. Okay, let's interview five. That's, we have some flexibility there regarding, you know, how many candidates we get and how many you like and how many you want to interview. I mean, it will, it will be your time. So we, we can make that decision on the 24th and then we set up the interviews for the second and the third.
Thank you. That's what I need, I appreciate it.
Great. Anybody else have questions about timeline? Thank you, Acting Deputy City Manager Hargrove.
I, I just wanted to interject that, that one of my duties in that position is to help with communications. And I, I appreciate that you recognize that is very important. And I'll be very happy to work with council and make sure that that is, is top of our priority list and we're, we'll be on that.
Great.
Thank you.
So for the small group, I was going to suggest, since Council Wink and Mayor also have volunteered already, I will, I will be glad to work with you. And I wanted to have Dorothy in the room as well. So that, it will be four people, but I think we can get it done very quickly.
That's great. Mayor Partim, did you want to do that too? Or you wanted to? Just for the draft of the job description, first draft, draft one? Do you want to do it? Yes.
So what, what is your availability?
Let's do that after the, after the meeting.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Any other questions for our acting deputy city manager in terms of this transition in the next week or two? Just thank you. Oh, Councilmember Quest?
I do have one more. And I think this is more to the group of council. So let's say the magic number is 15. We get 15 applications back. The document that comes out Friday will be used to determine how we select out of those 15. So we need to pick not only a number that we want to advance, but how we select that number. For instance, is it just four are in agreement to push that one forward? Or how would we go about that?
So I, Councilmember Wink, do you want to speak to that?
If you'd like me to go first, I can. I see. So you're asking what methodology we're going to use to make our final selection among the seven of us of who to move for an interview?
You bet.
All right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
So I, I think the, the time on Friday will be actually about the job description. If you want us to during that time, pull out what we think the major criteria are. I mean, and bullet like five to six things that we see that are looming from this that need to be considered in someone's qualifications and background. We can do that, I would imagine.
I agree.
And then that can be tweaked Monday night. And if you see something glaringly missing or strangely written, we can do that. But we do need to have some decision on Monday night and how we want to go, you know, how are we going to wind it down? I don't want to set that number tonight just because we, we have no idea how many we're going to get. Maybe only two come forward. And then we have two internal and two outside. And I'd probably say, let's interview them all. I want to have some comparison. I would, I mean, I hope we have at least three total that we can interview. Otherwise, it's hard to compare and figure out what's best. But does that make sense?
It's earned interest.
I don't know. If you don't want to do it that way, we don't have to.
You know, as long as we get something in place by Monday that we can all defend.
Yeah, yeah. Some justification for why we chose things, yeah. If you have any thoughts along the way, shoot us a message.
Pardon me.
Councilmember Martinez?
I agree with that. I think it's going to be the most efficient use of our time. And my question was too, if we have any input on that, should we send it to you in the meantime? Or?
Yes. That'd be great. Or send them to Maria so we keep the open meetings.
We can reply to all. That way everybody can see it. I mean, I copy you all when I send things. If you do reply to all, everybody will see it as well. So we can.
We're not supposed to be replying to all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so maybe.
Well, we can, we can do something else.
We'll have City Attorney just give us a brief on that because this could get really, really complicated in this next four months.
So right at the moment, you, instead of using Manager Keck, since he's working on some, whatever it is he needs to do to, to wind things down, you are working through Deputy Acting Director Hargrove. So please email her directly. And do not hit reply all to, so that we do not have any concerns about open meetings violations. And she will make sure that everybody sees everything.
I think we just said it's very clear, but I just want to make sure that I understood correctly. We're no longer emailing City Manager Keck and everything.
No, just about this particular issue.
This matter, thank you. Understood. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, I think he's here till October 3rd for other things,